Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Planning Commission Work Session Tuesday, August the 6th, 2024. I'd like to first welcome our city manager, Mr. Steve Stephen Carter?
Yes, ma'am.
I have to move my glasses off, my apologies. Thank you so much for attending today. And then I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Mr. Roy Melvin.
Thank you, happy to be here.
Okay, and Ms. Russell, if you would like to get us started?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us for our August Planning Commission meeting. Let's, we have three items on the agenda, and we want to review the items on our upcoming Board of Zoning Appeals Agenda. But I also wanted to introduce to our Planning Commissioners our three newest employees. And so we have three interns with us for the summer. They're doing a delightful job. And so if you would just, I won't make you speak, maybe you would just stand when I call your name. So we have Alex, and we have Madison, and we have Jalen. And they are being supervised by Ms. Regina Jackson. Ms. Jackson, did you want to share anything about our lovely three people?
Yes. I think Alex wants to actually say something, guys. He's the one in the group that does a lot of talking. So let's give him an opportunity to do that for a few minutes. Alex?
A few minutes?
Thirty seconds, Alex. Go ahead. Okay, there we are.
I thought you were going to do a presentation.
You change your mind?
Yes.
Well, Alex is at Manor High School, and he's a 10th grader. And we have in the middle Madison. And Madison is Madison Horton, she's at Churchland High School, and she's a 12th grader. And we have Jalen Frenell, and he's at IC Norcom, and he's an 11th grader. It has been such a pleasure working with these three. They have kept me busy, like, from one day to another, because every task I have put them on, they have challenged it. They are not only just doing what I asked them to do, they're actually looking at the materials and asking about business license and asking about zoning and actually what our departments do. They have listened to complaints from citizens. They understand the concept of the city being divided as it relates to zoning. They work the front desk, answering the phones. At first, they were a little skeptical about it and answering, but once they got the hang of it, they were doing a great job. I just wish them much success in whatever they decide to do. I've already had them say they want to come back if we have this program next year. This is the best place to say that, and so that if that's a possibility, then maybe that will happen. But we appreciate you, we thank you so much for being a part of the Planning Department for the summer.
Awesome, thank you.
We just would like to run through the agenda with a staff presentation of the recommendations of the three cases.
Okay.
And we'll start with use permit number 2407.
I am Julie Chopp, Manager of Current Planning and Zoning with the City of Portsmouth Planning Department. This use permit application involves a request to operate an event space banquet hall and an approximately 3,200 square foot suite within the Academy Crossing Shopping Center, which is located at 3282 Academy Avenue in the Churchland area of Portsmouth. The approximately 6.26 acre property is within the general mixed-use GMU zoning district and contains a one-story 46,140 square foot commercial building that was constructed in 1989. The Academy Crossing Shopping Center contains approximately 18 commercial suites and has roughly 273 associated off-street parking spaces. So north of the subject area is a Child Day Center and a retail building that are both zoned GMU or general mixed-use. South of the proposed event space banquet hall suite are additional commercial suites within the Academy Crossing Shopping Center. And further south across Academy Avenue and High Street are additional commercial properties that are zoned GMU. East of the property are medical buildings and a funeral home that are also zoned GMU. And Hampton Roads Transit HRT bus stop is located east of the site along Village Street. And west of the Academy Crossing Shopping Center, across the limits of Portsmouth, is a religious institution and the Associated Cemetery that are located within the city of Chesapeake. The proposed event space banquet hall will be known as Amazing Times. The space proposes to offer event space Monday through Thursday from 8:00 a.m. to 10:30 p.m. and Friday through Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to midnight. The applicant anticipates hiring 10 to 20 employees to assist with the operation. The staff plan to host, to cater to luncheons, meetings, family celebrations, and similar type events. Amazing Times will also host weekly youth confidence classes and business literacy classes. Most of the proposed upgrades are interior to the suite and include replacing the flooring, painting walls, changing restroom fixtures, and installing a portable countertop by an existing sink. The applicant also plans to install digital video equipment inside and outside with 24-hour recording capability. The floor plan on this slide depicts the event space, four pedestrian entryways to the suite, two bathrooms, a storage room, an electrical room, and a kitchenette. The building official did provide a preliminary estimate of the suite's capacity at 150 occupants, and a final determination of the maximum occupancy load will be determined upon review of sealed architectural plans prior to the applicant obtaining a certificate of occupancy. And compliance with the building official's determined capacity has been included as a recommended condition of this use permit request. The site can be accessed from West Norfolk Road, Churchland Boulevard, Tyrronick Road, and Western Branch Boulevard. Academy Avenue and Village Street provide direct vehicular access to the shopping center. For an event space banquet hall use, the zoning ordinance requires one off-street parking space per 250 square feet of building. The approximately 3,200 square foot suite necessitates 13 spaces. The parking lot for the shopping center includes roughly 273 parking spaces, which is sufficient to accommodate this use, as well as the other commercial uses within the shopping center. Staff recommends granting the applicant's request for a use permit with the recommended conditions outlined in the staff report. Although the Planning Department has recently seen a significant increase in requests for event space banquet halls, the proposed use in this location is compatible with the surrounding land uses. The use will allow for the reuse of an underutilized property with an active use. The applicant proposes to create local jobs to assist with the operation, which will strengthen the economy. The applicant also proposes to provide beneficial services through weekly enrichment classes. Planning staff did receive a letter from the City of Chesapeake indicating that the Chesapeake Planning Department had no outstanding objections to the proposed event space banquet hall. And to date, no other public comments have been received by the Planning Department. I'm happy to now answer any questions from the Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp. Commissioners?
Commissioner G. Thank you. One procedural question. As you mentioned, the Chesapeake Planning Commission gave their feedback. It's not normal, we get that? Is that because of the proximity of this one to the city line, or?
Yeah, because the property borders with the City of Chesapeake, we sent an adjacent property owner notice to the city, so they provided a letter in response to that.
Perfect, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions?
Yes. In terms of safety measures, are there any water sprinklers or fire extinguishers inside the building? I saw there's a kitchen, but nothing mentioned.
Are there any what?
Fire extinguishers or water sprinklers, just in case there's an emergency.
So the applicant did indicate that the shopping center does not have a sprinkler system, and I believe that the building official confirmed that a sprinkler system is not required for this particular use. But I believe that fire extinguishers will be required to be located within the building.
Good. And I also saw that there were, the applicant said that there was no mention of exterior changes. Would they be using the same sign shown in the slide, or would they need to change?
Yeah, so most of their upgrades to this site are interior, but I believe that they will, they'll update the sign, as well as they're installing video cameras outside, as well as inside the suite.
Okay. And then my last question I have is educational piece. But I saw a common theme where a lot of applicants would say that they will want to provide literacy classes. Is there a way that we ensure that these members are competent enough to hold literacy classes? I see this on multiple statements, and just want to make sure that these are the right members we want, you know, teaching our children or adults.
You mean, like, that the classes be taught by appropriate credentials?
Correct. Because I saw that, but I saw that in the next item as well, and I just want to make sure that's not a common theme that members use in order to get approved banquet slash literacy.
Ma'am?
Go ahead, Ms. Russell.
Mr. Melvin, so your comment about do we have appropriately credentialed parties providing these services, and while that's a good question, the scope of our review is limited to land use, is the land use appropriate at this location? And so we just trust that consumers will be savvy relative to what they're paying for, for services, and if they're not getting quality results, then they would discontinue.
Okay. I just want to make sure there's not a common theme of trying to get approved.
It might be. It really and truly could be. Per the local ordinance and the state code, our purview is limited to the appropriateness of this location for the proposed.
Commissioner G, go ahead.
And to give some feedback on that, one thing you'll learn is there will be often things that we throw in as sweeteners that we have to put outside of our mind, because it doesn't, to Ms. Russell's point, does not go to the land use. I mean, wait till you get to see a cell phone tower. A lot of stuff you have to put outside of your mind. But I think that you make a valid point, and I would ask the question, we have no way to even follow through with those items, to verify that they even do these things in the future. They could say we're going to hold learning classes, but it's a business, so it's there to make money. So if they don't have the resources or the experts, then there's a possibility they could still stay within their land use and pivot away from that.
I guess we couldn't add a condition, because it doesn't relate to the actual event space banquet hall?
That's right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we're ready for our next agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Chopp.
All right, our next case number is use permit number 2408, Mrs. Melzone, going to make that presentation.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Valerie Melzone. I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. The next application before you today is a request for a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall at a suite within the 1629 High Street parcel designated as 507 Williamsburg Avenue. The subject property is approximately 0.55 acres in size and is located within the neighborhood mixed-use or NMU zoning district within the Innovation District at the intersection of High Street and Williamsburg Avenue. The parcel, which is identified as 1629 High Street, currently contains a one-story, approximately 10,360 square foot building with multiple commercial units. It was constructed in 1948. There is an existing parking lot with approximately 30 parking spaces on site. The subject suite, identified as 507 Williamsburg Avenue, is approximately 600 square feet in size. It sits between two other commercial units within the same building that are currently occupied by a funeral home and a salon. The property is partially located within the AE flood zone and within the resource management area of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area. The surrounding area consists largely of public and institutional uses. IC Norcom High School is located to the north of the subject property across High Street. Commercial uses zoned NMU adjoins the subject property to the south. The City of Portsmouth Social Services Building is located to the west of the subject property across Williamsburg Avenue. Single-family dwellings zoned NMU are located to the southeast. Vacant parcels zoned NMU are located to the east, and the Hampton Roads Community Health Center is located further east. The applicant is proposing to operate Major Event 757 as an event space to be rented for a variety of private functions, including birthday parties, holiday parties, baby showers, game nights, paint nights, meetings, and more. Event space banquet hall uses require a use permit within the NMU zoning district. The proposed event space is approximately 600 square feet in size and includes one restroom and a small storage closet. The venue will be available to rent between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 12:00 a.m. The space will be maintained by one employee and accommodate up to approximately 49 guests. No additional interior improvements are planned at this time. Proposed exterior improvements are minimal and include the installation of a new sign, a mailbox, and a security system. The applicant plans to utilize a portion of the existing parking lot to provide the three off-street vehicle parking spaces required to operate an event space banquet hall of this size. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates 507 Williamsburg Avenue for commercial uses. The subject property is also located within the Innovation District. Staff is recommending approval with conditions of the applicant's request. With the recommended conditions, the proposed use is consistent with the recommendations of the city's Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan and, while not yet adopted by City Council, the Innovation District Plan. The event space is appropriate in this location and will utilize space within an existing commercial building promoting the reuse of an underutilized property. The proposal introduces a complementary use that may reinforce the surrounding area as an activity center. To date, no public comments have been received regarding this application, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Melzone. Commissioners, are there any questions? Commissioner G.
Just a slight one. With this one being so close to the school, does that affect the land use with regards to event spaces? In my mind, just as someone who has thrown events in the past, does it in any way be affected by alcohol in that facility? I couldn't find anything about that, but...
I don't believe so.
No, we, when we updated the ordinance in 2020, we took out, we used to have distance separators that would exist for, like, entertainment establishment event spaces from religious establishments and schools, but those were all removed during the update. So unless there's, you know, an ABC regulation that...
Which we have here, so, yeah. Okay, perfect, thank you.
Commissioners, any additional questions? No? Okay, thank you, Ms. Melzone.
She's presenting the next case as well.
Hello again, I'm Valerie Melzone. I'm a senior planner with the City of Portsmouth. The next application before you is a request for a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall at 4644 George Washington Highway, Suite 4646. The subject property is approximately 9.6 acres in size and is located within the general mixed-use or GMU zoning district. The property contains an approximately 90,000 square foot commercial complex called Williams Court II Shopping Center that was constructed in 1988. The shopping center contains 18 commercial units. Suite 4646 is approximately 8,000 square feet in size and is located at the rear of the shopping center. The property also contains an existing parking lot with more than 300 vehicle parking spaces. The subject property is not located within a special flood hazard area. The surrounding area consists largely of commercial and residential uses. The Williams Court I Shopping Center, zoned general mixed-use or GMU, adjoins the subject property to the south. New single-family development, zoned URMPO or urban residential, within a master-planned overlay district, directly adjoins the property to the north. Single-family residences zoned UR or urban residential are located east, west, and further north of the subject property. The applicant proposes to operate an event space banquet hall as a dance studio and event space to be rented for a variety of private functions, including birthday parties, bridal showers, baby showers, and wedding receptions. Event space banquet hall uses require a use permit within the GMU zoning district. The proposed event space banquet hall includes a 6,000 square foot event space, two restrooms, two private rooms, a kitchenette, and multiple storage closets. The venue will be available to rent between the hours of 10:00 a.m. and 11:00 p.m. The space will be maintained by up to four employees and may accommodate up to approximately 300 guests. Proposed interior improvements include the installation of a kitchenette and new flooring. Exterior improvements include the relocation of the dumpster and placement of new directional signage for parking. The applicant plans to utilize a portion of the existing parking lot to provide the 34 off-street vehicle parking spaces required to operate an event space banquet hall of this size. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates 4644 George Washington Highway as a mixed-use corridor. Staff is recommending the denial of the applicant's use permit request. While the proposed use is generally consistent with the recommendations of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan, the proposed location poses significant safety concerns. Suite 4646 is located at the rear of an existing shopping center. The public entrance to the suite is within a loading area, and the suite does not have any designated off-street vehicle parking spaces. In addition, the surrounding shopping center currently accommodates several similar establishments, which already pose a significant challenge for the police department, as well as nearby residential and commercial uses. To date, no public comments have been received regarding this application. An additional letter was submitted by the applicant this morning and was distributed to each of you prior to the meeting, and I will now stand by for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Melzone. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
There was...
Commissioner G, go ahead.
There was one statement you said about improvements, other than the dumpster. What was the additional improvement? Was there something about parking spots that were going to be added back in that back part?
No, it says signage for parking, so I believe what they mean is signs pointing you from the existing parking lot to the entrance, since it's kind of around the parking center.
Because I have frequented that area, amazing oxale flatbread, and had no idea that was there, and that entire back portion is just very problematic. I know that we had talked in the past about the concerns with the, what are they called? Shipping containers. I think that having that in mind, that those aren't technically authorized and were kind of added on, leads me to be even more concerned about that particular use and the fact that there's already a rental space on the normal part of the shopping center, just seems odd. And this is coming from someone who's also a former dance dad, so I understand the importance of that space, but I think that dual usage really concerns me.
Commissioners, Commissioner Melvin?
With this new statement from the applicant, what's the planning staff's new thing to still deny?
We did not change our recommendation based on that letter. I know in that letter, they talk about potentially striping parking spaces to the rear. Just briefly looking at it, it doesn't appear as if they would have enough room to make zoning compliant parking spaces back there, but it's something that if they wanted to add it and you wanted to see if it could work, we could defer the application, they could update the application. But as it is right now, there are no changes to their conceptual site plan based on what's in that letter.
Okay. And was there any mention from the Public Health Department about the external, the outside space? I went there about two hours ago, and it seems that the shopping centers now use that area as, you know, shipping containers, loading zone, but there's also two dumpsters there, and there's a truck that's there as well that houses a homeless person. So now they're figuring out where dumpsters should be moved, with the cars that are back there as well and cleaning up the space, and then providing services to the homeless people who are back there so that members can, you know, walk through and not, there wouldn't be any problems.
Yeah. This application was not routed to the Department of Health. I'm not familiar if they would need that, because they're just planning on doing a kitchenette? Okay. So that might be something that they need to look at later, but the Department of General Services didn't provide any comments regarding waste management yet, so I'm just not sure about that part yet.
And I just bring this to your attention, because right now, the picture is here, nice, but when you go there right now, it does not look like...
So the top one is from yesterday, but you are correct, that it's a truck further forward, and I couldn't get it all into the picture, yeah. But there was quite a bit of debris and dumpsters and an entire bus or truck, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Melzone.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the ECA agenda for August 28. What did she do with her ledger? Did she keep it? Do you have hers?
Yeah.
Oh, you're going to put it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I am Trevon Boone, zoning administrator for the City of Portsmouth. And pursuant to Section 15.2-2204 of the Code of Virginia, the zoning administrator shall present a copy of the applications received to be heard before the Board of Zoning Appeals for special exceptions and variances to the Planning Commission for information purposes and in which, in turn, the Planning Commission may send a recommendation to the Board of Zoning Appeals or appeal as a party at that hearing. On August 28, the following cases will be heard before the Board of Zoning Appeals. 426 Sussex Drive is requesting a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a reduction of the required rear yard setback from five feet to three feet and the required side yard setback from five feet to one feet foot to construct a 24 by 24-foot garage. 2904 Tynbach Lane is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize the expansion of a non-conforming structure to construct an attached garage and cover front porch addition on an existing dwelling. 2700 Elmhurst Lane is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a six-foot fence which exceeds the maximum fence requirement permitted on a vacant property. 2701 Chicago Avenue is requesting a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize the reduction of the required corner and side yard setback from 20 feet to three feet in order to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth, as well as a special exception for the reduction of the interior side yard setback from 20 feet to 30 feet in order to construct a detached single-family dwelling. 2705 Chicago Avenue is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setback from 20 feet to three feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. 1906 LaSalle Avenue is requesting a special exception to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setback from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 100 feet in depth. 1217 Marshall Avenue is requesting a special exception before the Board of Zoning Appeals to authorize a... to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setback from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on a lot 25 feet in width and 108 feet in depth. 24, excuse me, 2124 Pearl Street is requesting a variance before the Board of Zoning Appeals in order to authorize a reduction of the required corner and side yard setback from 10 feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling and a special exception to authorize a reduction of the required interior side yard setback from seven feet to three feet to construct a detached, single-family dwelling on a lot 25.5 feet in width and 105 feet in depth. These are the cases that will be appearing before our Board of Zoning Appeals on August 28. If there are any questions, we will obtain them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioners. Are there any questions? No? Okay, thank you, sorry. Ms. Russell.
That concludes our agenda with the exception of discussion. Are there items that are, the Commissioners are interested in discussing?
Okay. Are there any questions that you may have that you want to discuss with staff Commissioners? Go ahead, Mr.
Yes. So for our last peruse item, the police department made a comment saying that a lot of members from Norfolk have been coming over here to Portsmouth for these types of use permits due to Norfolk having stricter zoning laws, I suppose. Has the staff reached out to Norfolk to see why that's the case? What was their reasoning for that change? Are they seeing something that is impacting, I guess, their version of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan that may impact us later in the future? Just trying to think ahead to see if this is going to be a common theme that we're going to.
I want to make one comment that relative to staff's review of these types of agenda items, and then I'll defer to Ms. Melzoun about reaching out to Norfolk. Because of the frequency that we're receiving these applications, I believe there were two last month and three this. They're the only items on your agenda, in fact, for your August agenda. We, in team meetings, have talked about what is the cause for this? So typically, you'll see shopping centers have a life cycle. And as they age, you'll see the types of uses will change. And so is that indicative of what's happening here? We don't know. Is it a change in terms of lifestyles and homeowners, property owners, persons that have tenancy in their property, not wanting to entertain in their own properties? Because we see a common theme about birthday parties and things like that. We're not sure. Even look to the American Planning Association has a service that's nationwide where you can explore different and emerging trends in planning. And so I looked at that resource, and I haven't seen anything yet. So the question is one that we are exploring and will continue to explore. Without, I'll just make some statements of fact. You know, in downtown Norfolk, there were a number of instances of problems related to restaurant-bar venues and late hours. And so for that, I really looked at our event space venues for the hours of operation. And you'll see that most of them are closing at 12:00 midnight. And so that doesn't lend itself to a club-type venue. So I believe that the proprietors, when they say, you know, rental space, family-oriented, because it just, it doesn't seem to lend itself to a pay-for-entry, entrance, club-type atmosphere. And so I think we just have to monitor it. And consistent with your observations about one of the use permit requests, some are better than others. You know, some look like they are problems just waiting to, you know, they're just problems just waiting. And what the use permit does in terms of a land use tool, it permits a site-specific evaluation by the locality on the appropriateness of a location for a specific use. And if the anticipated off-site impact can be mitigated with conditions, then that's the opportunity that's created by a use permit. And our opinion, two of the requests allow that, and one, if there were 100 conditions, it still would not be appropriate.
Commissioners, do you have a question? Commissioner Curry.
I think we have a statement. I think that it has to go by a case-by-case basis. There are more people trying to get their kids more involved into that. And I was just going to say, amazing that it has been a lot on the docket, but a lot of people, there are more people looking for more spaces because there are a lot more young girls trying to find dancing, doing something for the kids, creative. And so I think it has to be by case-by-case. I don't think it has to do with city. I think people are trying, more people are sharing spaces now. And I thought, no, one group, they just grew to 48 people. So they're looking for their own space. They're no longer going to share spaces. Competitions are coming up. So people need their own time to practice more. So I think we're going to go by case-by-case basis instead of trying to put them all into one bin and that everybody's just trying to migrate over to Portsmouth. I don't want to put that stigma on this particular thing. But we do have to evaluate with case-by-case when they are coming over here to Portsmouth, though.
Ms. Snacks, and I just, Mr. Melvin commented that had we reached out to the city of Norfolk.
Uh huh. Yeah, we did not reach out to the city of Norfolk to, you know, understand fully from their perspective why they made more strict regulations for those uses or why. So we don't have answers for that right now. But I can say that there's no evidence presented by the applicants that they ever tried to make these uses in Norfolk. So we just don't know that that comment applies to these, but it may to others, yeah.
And one key item about the statement from the police and with regards, which I agree wholeheartedly, some of the items that Norfolk has instituted include live music and additional regulations to that extent. So it really limits the items. And live music is even inclusive of a DJ. It's considered live music. So with that, many, what would be a restaurant that want to entertain additionally will seek other establishments. And to the points that were made, Norfolk has done it based on security concerns at the time. And who's to say they won't change their mind in the future? And I applaud us. I actually had a meeting recently with the economic development team, and we, or members from the team. And we talked about the fact that we are seeing an influx, and it's a positive thing as long as we, as you all are doing, keep an eye on it. That's all you can do. And we can succeed and excel from that, especially with some of the recent headlines we've been receiving about the work being done on High Street. I think it's a great opportunity for us as long as we stay diligent and aware. I agree.
Thank you. I have a question. Mr. Boone, if I may, and I'll backtrack. Some of these lots that are asking for a reduction are the result of recent discussion with the Board of Zoning Appeals? Are they the vacant lots that have been sitting for years? No taxes, anything?
Correct, correct. Yes, that's, the majority of these lots that are looking to develop, are vacant lots that have been sitting for years. And based on the recent conversations and with the Board of Zoning Appeals and Planning Commission City Council, that's where the special exception came in to be able to allow them to be along those lots below 30 feet and under.
Thank you, appreciate it. Commissioners, is there anything else? Ms. Russell, anything else?
I do not.
Okay. If not, this meeting is concluded, and we will see everyone in the City Council chambers at 1:30. Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I would like to welcome you all to this very important meeting today, Tuesday, August 6, 2024, in the City of Portsmouth City Council Chambers. I would like to start today's meeting today by welcoming a new Planning Commissioner, Mr. Roy Melvin. Thank you, sir.
Happy to be here.
Thank you very much. In addition, our secretary, Ms. Regina Jackson, has had the pleasure of mentoring several students since June. And I would like to acknowledge their presence here today. Alexander Dixon, who is from Manor High School. You could stand, thank you very much. Alexander Dixon from Manor High School. He is currently in the 10th grade. Madison Horton from Churchland High School, who is a 12th grade senior. And Jaylen Fennell from IC Norcom, who is in the 11th grade. She said that they have learned so much from the business license process, permits, zoning, and it has been a great pleasure. Thank you for joining us today. All right. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Commissioners, we will now have roll call. Please indicate your presence electronically. Six members of the Planning Commission are present.
Commissioners, before you are the minutes of the June 4, 2024, public hearing. If there aren't any changes, we are in need of a motion.
I recommend approval of June 4 Planning Commission minutes as presented.
Second.
Thank you. Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the June 4, 2024, meeting, and you will be voting electronically. The minutes are approved by a vote of 6 to 0. Announcements of future meetings and conferences. Our next scheduled work session is Tuesday, September 3, 2024, at 12:30 p.m., City Council Conference Room, followed by public hearing at 1:30 p.m., City Council Chamber. Items reviewed today will be presented to City Council for action at their September 10, 2024, public hearing or as otherwise noted. Planning Commission rules limit a speaker up to five minutes to speak. We also ask that everyone please silence your cellphones at this time if you have not already done so. Our first item, UP-24-07, Academy Crossing. R. Stansel requests a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall in Suite 36 and 37 of the shopping center at 3282 Academy Avenue in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial use. The property is owned by Midlantic Builders Virginia, LLC, and is identified as Tax Map 818, Parcel 13. The staff coordinator is Julie Chopp. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Shontavia Slavitt. I'm a representative for R. Stansel on behalf of Amazing Time.
Ma'am, I apologize. Do you mind repeating your last name, please?
Lovett.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay. So we will be offering versatile classes for luncheons, meetings, family celebrations, and similar gatherings. We're not just an event space. We'll be holding community service events and planning youth confidence classes, business literacy classes, and employ our community while giving back through volunteer efforts as well. We intend to use this space also for renting out some party equipment and supplies to support our customers' needs.
Is that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, are there any questions of the applicant? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Lovett.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-07. I have no registered speakers. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Commissioners, is there any more discussion?
G.
Commissioner Curry.
I just had one question. What type of party equipment are we renting?
Ms. Lovett, would you like to come back up, please?
As far as party equipment, it will be table, chairs, and decorations of sort, depending on the needs of the customer.
Like bounce houses, anything of that nature?
Um, yes.
Are you planning to rent it out for parties?
Yes.
Do you have the guidelines of what type of parties that you'll be renting it out for?
More like birthday parties, retirement parties, and things of that nature. Those will be handled, I mean, those will be held on the weekends. And during the week is when we'll offer the classes and things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lovett. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Are there any additional questions? No?
If there's no more discussion, Commissioners, we are now in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner G.
I move for acceptance of UP-24-07. I don't believe there was with conditions.
Second. Thank you, Madam Secretary.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. We have a motion and a second to approve UP-24-07, and you will be voting electronically. With conditions, and you will be voting electronically. This item is approved 6 to 0 with conditions. Our next item, UP-24-08, Innovation Overlay. T. Majors requests a use permit to operate an event space hall in a suite addressed as 507 Williamsburg Avenue within a building located at 1629 High Street in the neighborhood mixed-use NMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property for commercial uses. The property is owned by T.W. Dana III and is further identified as Tax Map 97, Parcel 1. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hello, good morning.
Good afternoon.
Oh, good afternoon.
It's okay.
Long day already, just left work. The business is called Major Events 757.
May we start with your name?
Oh, hi, Taryn Majors.
Mavis?
Majors, Taryn Majors.
Thank you.
And yes, I have Major Events 757 located at 507 Williamsburg Avenue in Portsmouth. I plan to open an intimate event space for the community at an affordable price. My goal is to provide a versatile venue where people can host various events, such as paint nights, podcast tapings, photo shoots, birthday parties, small showcases, pop-up shops, intimate parties of game nights, graduations, dance rehearsals, organizational meetings, things like that. Right now, we're just using it for storage and personal events and overflow for my hair salon. But we really want to get it open to the public. It only fits about 50 people because it has 600 square feet. So it's really just for small things.
Thank you, Ms. Majors. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the applicant? Who was that?
Melvin.
Commissioner Melvin?
Good afternoon, Ms. Majors. No questions, but I did want to encourage you to interact with the health community that's surrounded by this building, by hosting youth programs, banquets, and community outreach programs, and maybe job opportunities or internships.
Oh, yeah.
And there's also schools there. I think this would be a very great thing for the city of Portsmouth. So that's all I have to say.
I'm open, thank you for that.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry?
Are there any restrooms in?
Yes, it's one bathroom.
One bathroom?
Commissioners, any additional questions? Thank you, Ms. Majors. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-08. We have no registered speakers. However, if there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address, and you will have up to five minutes to speak.
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My name is Charlene Fundenberg. I have been dealing with Ms. Majors for approximately six months, I think, and every now and then I sublease her facility so that I can have my classes. I'm sorry, I didn't give my name.
Ms. Fundenberg?
Is that okay? Charlene Fundenberg, did I say that?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right. I am the owner of Hills and Steels Gun Club, so I offer classes in that particular space. And all it is, like she said, is a small intimate space because a lot of us don't need Hiltons or Ramada Inns or things of that sort in order to have our functions. We just need a small space where we can have 15 to 50 people come in and have an event. That's all we need. And this particular location serves that purpose, and I think it would be a great asset for those who are looking for such a space in Portsmouth. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing for item UP-24-08. If there's someone here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be none, Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any more discussion? If not, we are in need of a motion and a second.
Madam Chairman, I move to approve UP-24-08. I believe that's with conditions?
Yes, sir.
With conditions.
Second. Thank you. Madam Secretary, we have a first and a second.
Thank you. Have first and a second, and we will be voting electronically. This item is approved six to zero with conditions. Our next item, UP-24-09, George Washington Highway. E Hines requests a use permit to operate an event space banquet hall in Suite 4646 of the shopping center at 4644 George Washington Highway in the general mixed-use GMU zoning district. The future land use map of the Build One Portsmouth Comprehensive Plan designates this property as a mixed-use corridor. The property is owned by BHG Capital LLC and is further identified as Tax Map 457 Parcel 1. Staff coordinator is Valerie Malzon. Will the applicant or representative for this application please come forward and present your application at this time?
Hi, my name is Kristen Huber. I am up here on behalf of Erica Hines and her family, and this is Teresa Roseborough. They will be operating the Creations Dance Studios extension, which would be used for space for them to have their dance studio practice competitions in addition to other uses, which Teresa can explain.
Good afternoon. Just to give you a little bit of literature about Creations Dance Studio, we successfully operate Creations Dance Studio in the same shopping center benefiting the youth of Portsmouth. Creations is an organization that empowers the youth by engaging children in positive events that promote academic growth, achievement, maturity, self-esteem, and work ethic. We provide tutoring sessions. We also do promote social skills and self-esteem groups for the kids. They work, we work with the youth to strengthen their confidence, confidence level by helping them realize that anything is possible to achieve, to achieve hard work and dedication. Our goal is to promote children to be the best that they can be. The idea behind this event banquet hall arose from, I'm sorry, their need for the dance studio to have a larger space for competitions, practice of which we rent other establishment and offer in other surrounding cities in the area. We use, we, I'm sorry, we use this mainly, this space would be mainly used for the dance studio competition practices, youth events, birthday parties, and bridal showers with no other events going really late in the afternoon or the evenings. And it will not be used as a club-like attendance in the shopping center area in which we have our other locations at.
I just also wanted to add, I know this shopping center has needed a lot of TLC, and I work for the new owner that just purchased it a year ago, and we've worked really hard to get the shopping center cleaned up, and there's some things we still need to do which we are working on, and I feel like having these great tenants here with this great opportunity of use in this building will benefit the property and help us focus on getting it where it should be.
Commissioners, are there any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Melvin?
Good afternoon. So, one question, or maybe two. Why this location? What makes this location so attractive?
So, she has a space in the front of the building for the dance studio, but it's not large enough to do the competition practices and competitions. So, when she found out this warehouse space was up for lease and I was working on cleaning it out, I talked to her about it because she wanted to expand in the space next to her, but that tenant, you know, was current with their rent and not planning on leaving. So, the only other option was this space in the back.
Was there any other locations looked at before deciding this space?
No, because she, it's just easier to be in the same shopping center for her, so and the opportunity came about, and at the time, we didn't know we needed a conditional use permit. So, she's already gone in there and started improving the space, and I worked really hard on clearing it out. It was just full of stuff, just nothing being used in that space at all.
When was the last time you visited the site?
They're there every day.
Correct, yes.
They're, sorry.
And it's more convenient, convenient for our parents, too, because a lot of times that the parents don't have transportation. So, we have teen moms and other people that live in the area that can provide transportation to get the children there for practice. We go constantly every day to clean up, pick trash up, because we do take pride in their parents. We know that sometimes that when you look at coming to an organization or when you look at something outside, your first impression is a lasting impression, and we want it to be a positive impression that when you come up to the building, that it looks, you know, it looks like somewhere that you want to visit, somewhere that you want to come in. So, we constantly go out every day. If trash is out there, we pick up the trash. We also, you know, instill with the children, too, as well, that they help, too, because we also want them to take pride that, hey, this is going to be one of our new locations that we're going to be at.
Thank you, all did a great job cleaning up inside. Have you seen the outside space, though?
We have.
I went there two hours ago, and they have dumpsters there and a truck there with a homeless person inside. Were you aware of that?
Yes, and I am working on getting the landlord to notify the tenant whose truck that is to get it removed so we can have it legally removed because we can't do it without giving proper notice. And there's an RV that I've been trying to get the owner of that to remove, but as of now, he still has not, so I'm going to work on getting that towed since I've already notified him. And the dumpsters, we are relocating, so we have to contact all the tenants and the dumpster companies to get those in a better location and have them lock the dumpsters because right now, people are dumping stuff in them and causing an issue.
What about the loading zone? Is the shopping center willing to move that section, that area?
The loading zone? Yeah, absolutely, yes. Yeah, we just need to put a plan together and notify all the tenants if this is approved.
Thank you. Nothing further.
Commissioner Gee?
A point of clarity for the department, the reason they have to come here today is for the rental, to be able to rent out the space, is not to use it as a dance studio or an addendum to the dance studio, just to make sure I'm clear on that.
Yes, it's for the event space.
Okay, perfect. Just want to make sure we had that clarity on that. The second part, looking at Parker Burnell and the other locations they own, is the expectation that you are going to raise Williams Court up to the level of what we see in some of the Virginia Beach and Kempesville locations for looks and aesthetics? Because I would say that those locations are on a much higher level than where we've gotten Williams Court to at this point.
Our goal was to get it to the level of the neighboring Williams Court, which is the Food Line Shopping Center. I think the landscaping looks really nice there, and the trash is always picked up there. So, as of right now, the landlord, the new landlord hired a new landscaper and hired a new trash person, and they have been staying on top of the landscaping. The trash is still kind of an issue that we were trying to work through. But yes, that would like to have it look as nice as possible.
I would encourage you to even look beyond that. I would not measure against your neighbors and measure against your other properties and the way they look. I did want to say one other thing besides, I forgot, as a dance stat, thank you for what you do. Thank you for the hard work and working with our young ones, so I truly appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Curry?
Once again, I want to pick it up off of my colleague. Once again, thank you for what you're doing in the community that is needed. My great concern was just about location and the things around it for the safety of the children and safety of everybody else. And that was one of my great concerns about things being removed, things being out of the way, as Mr. Melvin said, about the RVs being moved. Now, we want to have better clarity that things do have to go due process of getting them released from their property. I know that they take time, but just make sure that one thing that I am very concerned about, that you're doing a great job with the youth in the city, is just make sure that safety of our youth continues on, especially with that it's being like in the court taking back and renting it out, you know, in that particular space. Also, safety, because a lot of stuff is going on in that quarter side. Just want to make sure that's one of my concerns.
For safety measures, we have things that's in place that when the children are released from the dance studio, that each child is walked to their car, to their car, and we greet their parents and make sure that the children, you know, that we're releasing them to the person that's authorized to pick them up. And so, everyone is out there, all the workers, and anyone that's volunteering to help us is out there to make sure that we provide a safety at all times for the children.
Thank you. Commissioner Curry?
Your clarity, and I believe that and I understand. I want to just talk about maybe renting it out, because I think you have a better grips of what you're doing with your people, but you hear that you're going to be renting it out. You won't have a better grips of what's going on, and that's what I want to make clarity on, and I believe you're doing a great job. Please understand, I am grateful because we need more people like you in the city of Portsmouth. But when you're renting it out to other people in that space, the safety is what I'm concerned about. Do you have anything in measure or what may happen if you may rent it out, or what you're renting it out for is what I'm concerned about?
It will always be someone that's on site when we do rent out to someone. We just don't rent out and allow, you know, that person to just be there the whole complete time. It's always someone that's in charge to monitor the events and make sure that nothing that's not on their contract, that they're not bringing in or, you know, or doing anything that's, you know, that's not a good representation of creative dance studio. And if so, if we ever have that happen, then we will shut it down, and they will not, no longer be able to rent anything from us.
Thank you. Commissioner Taylor?
Is that the only entrance to the space that y'all are going to rent out? Is it only one entrance? Like, could it be accessed from the area that y'all already practicing in?
There's another door on the other side. Three doors.
Three doors?
Yeah.
But they're all to the back?
Can I show you the plan?
Isn't it up there? We have one. There it is on the.
You'll see these two doors.
At the bottom.
Oh, there you go. Those two doors. Yeah, so up at the other side.
Ma'am, would you mind walking over there and maybe pointing it out, please?
I'm asking, could it be accessed from the space they already have?
And then there's this door as well. It will only be used as an exit.
Okay.
For emergency purposes, but if needed, it could be used as an entrance as well. But there's these two for entrance and exit.
I just was asking if it could be accessed from the space that she's already in?
No.
This location? Okay.
No, she has to come around.
To the back?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Which means the kids have to come around to the back.
Thank you. Commissioners, any additional questions? Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, ladies.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-09. I do have one registered speaker. As I call your name, please come forward, and you have up to five minutes to speak. Daniel House.
Good afternoon, I'm Daniel House. Would you please put back the first picture where it had? No, no, right there. I need to walk over here real quick. So, these right here, these are storage containers that come on the park. I commend you for going out there today. I only found out this 40 minutes before the meeting. That's why I'm not dressed, and I apologize. So, I flagged the city in April this year. I flagged zoning, I flagged code enforcement, I tagged Hugle, I Tag Moody. That is an outdoor storage for shipping containers, which is in violation of city code. It's also a violation because they've extended the footprint of the building with an outdoor patio. Nothing's been done, nothing. I would not walk there with a guard dog at night, okay? There's no lighting back there. And let me show you a picture because unfortunately, I didn't have it here. So, they're talking about that it's clean, okay? This is the trash that's been there for months, for months, okay? You see, that's all there, okay? It's been there for months. Nobody, would you like to see, ma'am? Nobody?
Thank you.
Nobody has done anything about it, about the city, nobody. And the only way you get anything done for the city is you send a formal request after you complain. I know I've done it, okay? That used to be a workforce where people came and were hired for the day, okay? It's not a good area. I commend them for what they're doing, but it's a rat hole. It's a rat hole. Not only is that picture not valid, there's also a U-Haul that's there with the guy that's been living in there for months. I can't get the city to do nothing about it, nothing. You know, it's like deaf ears or crickets. You can't get anything done, okay? So, how are you going to do that? You can't issue a permit to them if there's a current violation in place, okay? That's Portsmouth city code, not mine, okay? So, you can't issue a permit till all those relevant infractions are taken care of, and I hope that y'all do something today about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. House. Oops, you okay?
Yep, yep.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP-24-09. If there's anyone here who did not get an opportunity to register, you have five minutes to speak.
Hello, good afternoon. This is me and my husband and I. I'm Shanika, he's Gregory McCoy. We- We have purchased a brand-new home on the opposite side, on the back, on Aptham Green. So, what he's saying about like the trash, people live in, I don't feel safe going to the Dollar Tree, the Ollies, like, it is completely a mess back there.
They don't dump the trash. The trash smell's so horrible, we can't even go in our backyard. I'd spent four hundred some thousand for a house. I can't even enjoy it. It's, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah, we have yet to be able to sit in, in our backyard. Because of this, and like you said, it was a trailer or somebody was living out there, a U-Haul or whatever it was, and it was still out there.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on. Commissioner Curry, did you have a question?
Yeah, I'm not, well, I was concerned because I see, I hear the concerns. But that's not for, yes, not towards the applicant. We, this is a concern for the owner and the management company-
Correct.
-that needs to be handled.
Right. Before the safety of those kids, I don't even go over there at, at, at night. Uh, I would love, I love what you're doing, but we need to do something over there.
Thank you.
Just some lighting or-
Lighting bad.
Lighting or something.
Like, we done sat and looked at each other like, did we regret moving over here?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. and Ms. McCoy.
Thank you.
Did I miss somebody? Okay, all right. I'm sorry, Commissioner Melvin, did you have a question?
Yes, um, the McCoys, this is a question for you all. So, are you all for or against if the applicant was able to do the provisions and move?
We need, we need, they can't.
Wait, excuse me, everyone. We can't, um, like, discuss this across the room. If, Mr. and Ms. McCoy, if you would like to come back up here and answer, um, ma'am, thank you. Commissioner Melvin's question.
Yes, we're, we're for it. I have no problem with that, no. We're just, just the safety concern.
Just the safety and the trash and-
The shopping center, yeah. But if they could, I have no problem with that. I love what you're doing for the kids. I work with the kids. I coach the youth.
And I teach kindergarten, so.
We love the kids, but for the safety, I would, you know what I'm saying? Just give them some lighting and clean it up out there. And I think we'll be okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Hey, Commissioner G.
I, I mean, I just want to reclar- and this wasn't for you. I just want to reclarify the point I was making earlier also. They can use the facility to this day for the dance. It's just the rental that, that is what we're here to discuss today, for them being able to rent it out to other places. Now, I wholeheartedly agree and to the point that was made earlier about the shipping containers, we actually brought that up in, in our work session and have been talking about that. Uh, but just so everyone's aware that it, it's the rental that is the whole discussion. They have had access and, as to their point, have used it. Um, so the kids, they're, and they're doing a great job with them with the security procedures. But I agree, and that was my point also about the facility in comparison to the other facilities. That's something that we would, that needs to be addressed, but it's not part of our topic today.
Right. Okay, thank you, Mr. and Ms. McCoy.
Thank you.
Commissioner Curry, did you have a question? Commissioner Taylor? Okay, I, I'm aware of that. I just want to make sure everybody's questions got answered before we moved on. Thank you so much, ma'am.
Good afternoon. I'm Erica Hines. I'm the owner of Creations Dance Studio. I've been having this organization since two thousand and sixteen for children ages five to eighteen. The purpose of me standing up today because they are talking about the ship containers, the U-Haul, and the trash. The ship containers have nothing to do with the property that we are trying to rent. To be honest with you, I have been working with the owner, helping him clean up. Me and my organization and my dancers, we go out daily picking up trash. I have talked to the other business owners. They have improved since I've been helping the owner. It was worse out there. It's better. We're making it better. But it's time too. But it is better. Um, the dumpsters, they was in the middle of the street. They are no longer there. They have been moved. The owner of the club, that owned that, for the U-Haul, he's trying to get in the contact with the person who owned the U-Haul so they can remove it. The homeless men, of course, they have been out there, but they don't be there when we're there. We can't do anything when we're not there. We can't stop the homeless from coming if we're not there. But I just want to let y'all know, Creations Dance Studio have been keeping that property clean, clean. Not just in the back, in the front, where my other business is at. So, the ship containers, I have nothing to do with that. But I can say the new owner of the property is getting that taken care of. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? Okay, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How long has the property been under new ownership?
Just a year.
Okay, June of last year, August of last year?
To be honest, I really don't know the date, but I know it have not been that long. But since the new owner came, he have been doing a great job. Like I stated, I've been working with him. I take my organization, we go out there ourselves, my friends, my family. We go out there daily and we clean up. I have called all the dumpster companies out there. I got the dumpsters removed. I call and make sure that they are coming weekly or every two weeks, have their business have it set up to get their dumpsters, um, picked up. I call to make sure they come. I even contact the business owners to make sure they clean up their stuff. And I can say, we all have came together to try to keep it clean back there. It's teamwork. And I can say, they all have been working together. I'm sorry to the residents that they've been going through this, but we back there now. We're going to make it better. We're going to keep it better. As far as renting it out to other people for events and stuff, yes, they will have to get security. No one can rent this space out unless they have security. If they don't have security, they cannot rent that space out. I'm doing this for the children. And it would save us a lot of time, a lot of money for us having to rent other places for practices, for performances and stuff, when we have our own building now.
I have one more question, Ms. Hines.
Yes, ma'am.
So, when you have a dance studio, you have, I'm not an expert in dancing, but don't you have to maintain the integrity of the floor for the dancers? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Madam Sec- thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thank you.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing on item UP dash twenty-four dash zero nine. If there's someone else here who did not get an opportunity to register and would like to address this application, you may come forward, state your name and your address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to speak. Appearing to be-
Because I have a question for her.
Okay, Commissioner Curry has a question for you. If you would like to approach the microphone.
Hi.
Your name again, please?
Kristen Huber.
Ms. Huber, good to see you again.
You too.
Now, is the property owner in charge of all of the dumpsters or is it individually by their business that has their own individual dumpster that's required to get it dumped weekly or bi-weekly?
It's, it's by the tenant. So, I will have to go out there and, and hand serve notices to all the tenants that they need to, um, get it dumped and locked. And we need to contact the dumpster companies and have them all moved to one location in the back of the building, not in these people's backyard. And I've given these people, um, this, my, my business card and told them they can text me, email me. They have an issue, I'll go out there personally and, and work on it. I just don't know unless anyone tells me and I try to go out there as much as I can.
And I know the issue you're going to have where people who don't have the ability to dump, they're going to go back there and dump their trash or whatever into other dumpsters. So, there may be something that you could put, you know, talk to your, the tenants to put locks up there to prevent, because we're just trying to prevent further, any incidents further, uh, on, and, and there. We have no problem with Ms. Erica doing, because we commend her what she's doing in the community. But we just want to ensure that there's no further other issues. Um, so that's, this is like, a lot of work has to go on your behalf and the owner's behalf to ensure, you know, that this runs smooth.
Yes, and this is recorded, so I'm going to make sure the, the owner watches it to know how important it is we get these shipping containers removed.
He, he has to know.
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely. We, we don't want them there. They, it was something he inherited and, you know, it's, the tenant pays rent, you know, and, and it, I don't think it really had been an issue up until we were, wanted to lease out the back of the building. Um, and now, now we need to resolve it for sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Huber, I, I have one question.
Okay.
Are you the property manager for that parcel?
Um, I'm the leasing agent, but I've gone above-
So, your role, your role is just to lease it out. There is no property manager?
There is. His name's Joseph Rafina.
Okay.
Yeah, he's a property manager and I talk to him pretty much daily about, you know, because-
What is the role of a property manager?
To do site visits, talk to the tenants. Um, if there's any issues, they contact vendors, HVAC, you know, um, they just make sure everything's going good with the tenants and, and, and the property and property's cleaned up. He, he, you know, hires the landscapers and the trash removal company and lighting. We're going to have to do that.
Okay, and it, was he the original property owner? I'm just curious.
No, no, they just bought it and I believe it was July twenty, twenty-three.
Thank you.
So, we, it's been a lot of work, but we've made progress, but there's more to do.
You're the leasing agent and he's the property manager?
He's the property manager, but I help him because they are out of the area. And, um, I'm help, I'm, I'm doing more than I normally do for a landlord, because I lo- I love these people. You know, they're really, they're really nice and they deserve to have a nice shopping center, especially for the kids.
Thank you, Ms. Huber.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairman. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else here who would like to address UP dash twenty-four dash zero nine? Appearing to be none. Madam Chairman, members of the Planning Commission, this public hearing is now closed.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Is there any more discussion? Commissioner G?
Just for clarity, and this is, uh, again, a question to the staff. If this, uh, is not approved today, what is the process for them to reapply if some of these conditions and concerns are met in, in the future?
Commissioner G, the, um, Planning Commission makes a recommendation to the city council. And so, the application would need to be acted on by council. If it is, um, denied by council, the applicant could reapply in a year, um, for, uh, similar use.
I'm sorry.
She's like-
Thank you.
Ms. Chop, is there anything that needs to be corrected? Respectfully.
They're, they can reapply at any time. Uh, we took out the one-year, um, waiting period recently.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, commissioners, if there's no more discussion, we are in need of a motion and a second. Commissioner G?
I move for denial of UP twenty-four dash zero nine.
Thank you. Commissioners, we have a- Madam Secretary, I will second the denial for UP dash twenty-four dash zero nine. Madam Secretary?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just for point of clarification, a yes vote is that you agree with the denial. A no vote is that you don't agree. And you will be voting electronically. Okay. So, one, two, three, four. So, it is a four to two. So, the motion has passed. It is denied by a vote of four to two.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I believe that that concludes our agenda for today.
Yes, ma'am, that is correct.
Commissioners, is there any further business? Ms. Russell, is there any further business? Thank you, staff. Uh, this hearing, uh, this meeting is now adjourned.